All right, well, I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
My second.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so a motion passes. Okay, Chris, correspondence, are we saving to the end or do?
We could might as well just go in order. We have an invoice we received today from Halloran and Sage. Invoice 11429531 related to a number of enforcement matters and legal matters in court. That amount totals $2,336.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the invoice for $2,336. May I have a second?
Sure.
Okay, Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, election representative to IWWC inland wetlands. Okay, so before was it Mark? Okay.
And I believe he wants to.
Oh, he still wants to do that, okay. Well, I'll nominate, he's not here, but I'll nominate Mark to continue as our representative to be inland wetlands and watercourses commission. Okay, Brenda seconds it. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, public hearings. Dan Wildgin's garden center. Application for special exception. Use for garden center development with two seasonal greenhouses shed slash outdoor display area and parking on 18,362 square feet property at 1560 Boston Post Road, map 26 lot 30 Gateway Business B4 District Coastal Area Management Zone. Continue, oh, so they're asking us to continue.
So the application is still in front of the zoning board appeals for variances. So they've asked that you continue the opening of the public hearing to your February 21st meeting. Which is after the CBA meeting. And they've also granted us an extension of 29 of their 65 floating days for the public hearing.
I see that, okay. So, do we have to?
Make a.
Make a motion to continue. Okay. Do you want to do that?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to continue February 21st, 2024, right? This is 23 here or is that from the original?
That is a type of. No, a motion to continue opening of the public hearing until February 21st, 2024.
As requested, yeah. Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, okay, thank you. Okay, under discussion is contractor storage building preliminary discussion 23 Schoolhouse Road, map 27 lot 26 Gateway Business District. Owner 23 Schoolhouse Road LLC Agent Anthony Ruedo.
I don't.
If you want me to have a seat up there, exactly, if you don't want to stand in some heat, they can see you on the camera.
So, so. Anthony Ruedo, owner of 23 Schoolhouse Road. Just trying to come in front of you guys and get a game plan for the site, so I don't have to go back and forth with Joe.
So, let me give him a little briefing. So Anthony has retained Joe Wren for a special exception permit for contractor storage and warehouse building on 23 Schoolhouse. And there's issues around the perimeter of the property. And Anthony appeared to discuss possibility of using the request. Does it fit that again? So you did receive in your packet a narrative with a number of photographs?
Yeah.
Right, there's a lot of them. But basically what's going on is that one where we're supposed to be doing X amount of Arborvities along the fence line, it's like the lowest lying area. And then the Savitree development, we've been having kind of nothing but issues since I bought the place. So instead of making a big stink about it, we dug out like three feet, put an inch and a quarter stone in there and it really dried it up nice. The problem is with landscaping that area now, obviously you need some soil. And adding soil to that and all along there would just retain the water and it wouldn't drain good. So I'm asking to instead of just leave the fence and instead of landscaping on the inside of the fence like Joe drafted up, just revamp that whole other area between myself and Sally Mitchell and the backside of Savitree.
So the request is section 63 of the regulations. Next is section 63.7 screening. It says with the approval of a commission, the. The applicant could substitute an earthen berm wall or fence or location site design and materials instead of the entire buffer. So Anthony's seeking that in the area where he put in all the stone because they're going to have to dig it all out. You said how many feet of stone you put?
It would always be, but the biggest problem is it's always the water, you know what I mean? It comes off Schoolhouse Road, it comes off to Savitree Development. And you know, I'm lower than Saigon City as well, so.
Is that area A that you?
Yeah. No, no, area A is between me and the backside of Saigon, that would be landscaped. But I was also wishing to do, you know, instead, I know on Joe's draft it was like every four to six feet of arbres. But instead of doing that, doing like a nice mix of shrubs and other trees since it seems like it's a hot item.
Yeah, definitely is.
So, you know, instead of doing the usual where everyone just throws in a line of Arborvities, change it up with some flower, you know, butterfly bushes, some other stuff, and then some low granules. But no, it's the section B. So section B would be just.
The Savitree side.
Would be the Savitree side and they're actually three feet higher.
Yeah.
You know, and it always collects there. So I'm working with them a little bit too, but if we just didn't have to do the plantings there, we could just bring in more stone and it would resolve a lot of issues we've been having, you know, between the road runoff, air runoff, and Saigons. But instead of doing B, I would take that whole other corner which is a larger area and it benefits Sally Mitchell and blocks school line, line of sight of the Savitree building. Because that thing is just one big square. And there are trees 40 feet of, you know, separated, they don't really do much. And we're not going to see nothing for those like 50 years anyway, so.
Is that area, Sally Mitchell's?
Yeah. And she has like, I think, just one of their trees behind her, so she really looking for something to kind of help her out. So that fence ends like wherever the asphalt starts between B and C. And then that's where we would start all the shrubs and trees and do a good like a four inch caliber, eight foot, you know, maple couple of, that's those ones that are closer to the pavement. That was my drawing, they look like almost like flower, like, then the other one would be the arbres on the backside. And then a fence panel blocking the propane thing. And then basically I'm just going to dress after, I mean, the whole front revamped. And then onto the Schoolhouse side with the vinyl fence, right now there's a seven foot vinyl fence. We know, we know we got to do the 25 foot buffer, but we're also looking to do 15 feet until the fence and then give me a little bit of green space on my side of the fence since I'm doing everything for everybody else. I mean, I kind of would like to see a little bit of something, you know, instead of all the street sign. And then it would be inch and a quarter stone around the whole building. So for drainage wise, it shouldn't be an issue.
I was going to say that could really help take care of the drainage.
Well, that's what I was thinking, I mean, there's no point, the fence cheaper than asphalt.
Plus, I think it even would look better.
And the area C would be pretty extensive as far as the landscaping, so it would provide a pretty solid buffer because you put it a little more additional than just.
Yeah.
Arborvities and a little.
I'm going to tear up with some trees and throw some other things, I mean, I don't care really, I'm just, I don't want it to look nice anyways for the tenants that are in the office building. Plus, I know Sally, I've known her for years, so I know she's been real, you know, every morning Savitree goes out, starts their vehicles and stuff and half the lights are shining in her bedroom. And for me, I wouldn't want it to disturb her at all, so Saigon, we already cleared all his stuff out to dump it all for free just to kind of make him happy. Plus, I didn't want to look at it, I mean, he had car parts buried, a bunch of stuff. Cleared out all, added stone in there as well, then took whatever rocks we had along area A, kind of made like a rock retaining wall, and then we're going to do, that's where all our plantings will be. We have a little bit of an easement area because his actual leaching fields that you forgot to tell me about are a little bit on that corner. So we did an easement around it.
This A?
On the A side, yep, A side going right up towards like Schoolhouse, you see how the box is out?
Yes.
And there's like a leach, those are his actual, his leaching fields, but it's such a big system that it's like, you know, for a restaurant, that's quite, you know. So the fence would run 15 feet off the property line and then I would get another 10 or whatever, five on the backside just for green space for myself. And then we do whatever you guys wanted in the front, I guess just a bunch of decent maples or some trees, you know what I mean? It's all going to be fenced in no matter what, even across the pavement, just because at nighttime we're getting, I don't know, random people cut across to go like, I guess it's shorter, you know, you cut across there, go across Saigon or Savitree and the old DeKilos parking lot. So I like to kind of just clean it up, have it all fenced, it'll drop down to a probably a four foot or a high foot, a five foot gate across the asphalt. Yeah, besides that, I mean, the biggest concern is that area B with the drainage issue. Because you're physically not going to be able to really get, let alone get anything to survive, it's so wet there, you know.
So, but the, the stone had pretty much taken care of it or?
Yeah. Yeah, because now it's like you walk on it, yeah, it might, it might be wet, but it's not all mud or it's not adoring because like we took the material out of there, it was just years and years of soaking it up, you know, like a sponge, you know what I mean?
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Laura?
Nothing I can think of right now.
Okay, Brenda?
What's that?
Okay. Is this the final?
No, I'm going to have, well, Joe was like, hey, let me know what you think. And I was like, instead of going back and forth, I just wanted to talk to you guys.
Okay.
Because the other issue is if it's inch and a quarter around the whole building, why would, he says we have to put a gutter system in to go to dry wells.
You're, I mean, so, we can't, we're not going to get in the drink. So this is a preliminary discussion for a special exception application.
Okay.
And the question, Jeff Jacobson will go through and review the drainage with Joe when once he designs it, that's the complaint. But the main question is, you know, do you think it's reasonable for the property owner to remove the Arborvities that were behind that fence? And then have some substantial proposed landscaping in the bear areas that are not filled with trap rock where the, where the fence is now, you can't. You can't see through from, you know, the rock from the other properties, it's hidden, it's not visible from the street. So, does that seem, obviously it would need to be a formalized plan, but somewhat of a reasonable request, you know, depending on what's in for the preliminary discussion for him to go forward with that with his engineer. You can't approve it tonight.
No, no, not at all.
Are there any concerns or objections or?
No, I just want to make sure, this one says, so removing existing proposed trees, those are the Arborvities you were talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, and so we don't know what you're going to replace?
He's not that.
Well, there wouldn't, so.
Not there.
So, so going back to that section that I read before, it says that, you know, with the approval of the, of the commission, you know, you think you could substitute a berm wall or fence. So right now there's a six foot fence.
Yep.
And I think the proposal is, the reason that Anthony's here today is that he wants to take out all that stone. He doesn't want to take out all that stone that he just put in for drainage, the only way that he could put all the Arborvities that Joe Wren put on a friendly plan is to rip out all the stone for the drainage. So under that perimeter screening substitution where he's proposing to put more landscaping and kind of really heighten up the buffers on the bear areas to hide, to have, hide from Savitree, give Sally Mitchell next door a little bit more of a buffer. So that's, he's just looking for just a preliminary feedback.
Yeah, okay. Well, I, I mean, I've heard enough. It looks feasible to me, I mean, there's still a whole lot more. But right now, we'll just wait for you to come back.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you for coming and.
Thanks, guys, have a good night.
Thank you. You're welcome, have a good night. Okay, next discussion is Gulf Station Sam Store preliminary discussion, 685 Boston Post Road, map 36 lot 102 Shopping Center B4 District. Sayed Kazam.
Hello. Hello. Hi. So I'm just going to give you a quick briefing on this. So at your last meeting, we had a discussion about replacing an air pump with a drive through, I'm not a driver, I'm sorry, I just looked at something here in the drive through. With an air pump and a vacuum that would obstruct a parking space that was outside the building. The current air pump is on a sidewalk. The zoning commission, they would like to see that have a full A2 survey. We don't have in our master file any full or recent surveys, only the sketches which were again included in your packet. So that's where we left off with the applicant take over. Okay, go over.
Yes.
Hello, everyone, I would like to introduce myself, my name is Sayed Kazam. And I'm tenant at 685 Boston Post Road. I'm running that store since 2006, it's been almost 18 years. So I just want to make it clear, like, I just run the store part. Like, you know, the gas property owner is somebody else who owns the property and owns the gas part as well. So basically I'm just renting the store part. But you know, the air machine comes under like my responsibility to make sure the air machine is working at the gas station. So our air machine has been having a lot of problems, like, you know, it was very old, like, we always have to call to get it fixed, you know. So this time, you know, I purchased a new machine, but we got an option of having a vacuum as well with the air machine. So I thought like, you know, the, if we relocate the place of the air machine, that would be like, you know, better for customers, like, you know, when they coming for, to get air. So it will be like, you know, just the side of the property which is like not in use a lot, like, you know, not many people park in that corner specific. So we could just like, if we could put it there, you know, whenever somebody is getting gas, so they will know that, you know, where we have air. And plus, you know, they will be able to do the vacuum as well, you know, if it's needed. The other thing like, you know, the, where the, the air machine has always been, that is kind of, we have a building which is like a drive-through kind. So wherever, you know, people are filling up their air, it's like a drive-through, so sometimes, you know, the cars are coming from the backside of the building. So it's also, it's not really much safe, you know, for people like, you know, to put in air in that place. So I think if we are able to relocate, you know, that will be, you know, benefit for customers, you know, it will be just a separate spot, you know, where they can go and get the air and vacuum.
So was, you said there was a vacuum in the back of the building?
No, the air machine, personally had only.
Oh, the air.
Air, air machine. So now they have the machines, like, you know, they are combined, basically vacuum and air kind of same machine. So now it comes, you can have like with the vacuum as well. So basically like it's an air machine, but it has included vacuum as well. So where we have a air machine right now, I have a picture, you know, which is, you see it on, it says the blue Rhino. So you see how it's like in the corner that, you know, machine? So the machine, we got the new one, it's about the same size. So if we have it here, you know, that one, it's like a little bit like safety hazard, you know, like when people are coming from the backside. So they are putting air, you know, so, you know, sometimes it's like not safe. And the new place where we think like, you know, we will go and looks better, it will be in this corner. Right here. So this corner, you know, have a three parking spot, which is like a lot of time people don't park over there, they try to park close to the building. So it's always, it stays empty, you know, right here.
Okay, that's.
Those are the spaces closest to the road.
Closest.
To the road.
Right.
I would think behind the building will be better.
So, and after the last meeting, I think we kind of left the part out, was that I brought this up to you during staff report, the commission required an A2 survey because it was obstructing the parking spaces.
Yes.
But then we, we were discussing this and the issue is that the, the survey is very expensive and they don't own the property.
It is very expensive, yes.
Yeah, I talked to my landlord and they are not willing to help in that way, they said, you know, because they are not doing anything for their side. So, you know, they said you have to do that on your own. So I checked with some people and everybody, mostly people said, you know, it could take, start from 3,000 and it could go up to 5,000. So I think going towards that direction, you know, I understand, you know, there is a situation of the parking. But, you know, the parking, especially this corner of the, the property, we have never people parking in that side. Like, we have plenty of parking around our building because we have almost 13 parking just around the building. So for making sure like, you know, we have enough parking, I think that would be a little bit, you know, too much for me to spend, you know, as just owning the store part. Like, you know, we are not taking any money from the gas, you know, that's the other company who's making all the money from the gas.
So right now the site is pre-existing, non-conforming, it does not need, you know, perimeter landscaping, front landscaping, you know. And the proposal is, we don't know if it's compliant with parking at this point because we don't have the survey and the proposal is to remove a parking space.
Right.
And place the vacuums closest to the road.
Anybody? Laura? Question?
So, so then Sayed's next step is to get a survey?
So, so this was the discussion at the last meeting for the application to the commissions and we need a survey to show compliance because of the obstruction of the, the parking space. And because of the price of the survey and the, it's lack of cooperation with the property owner to pay for the survey. The request is to waive the survey. But we're in an awkward situation because we have no way to tell compliance and we're losing a space.
Right.
We also discussed replacing the air pump where it currently is, I understand it's an issue with going around the building, but it doesn't obstruct or remove any parking spaces.
So I'm, I'm Jerry, I own, they're even doing company in town, I did all age back work on the building, so I'm kind of just, just so you guys know, I am. I'm friends with them, just kind of helping through the process, and I'm going to help them do the process and do the work, so I'm just trying to understand how it all works. So to me, this is new, right?
So to fill you in is that gas stations are special exception permits. So when people, just like the Joe man before who was talking about his landscaping, he's got a contractor's business, which is going to be a special permit.
Okay.
And what happens is you have to have a full-blown A2 survey, show compliance with all the parking, through these regulations, not based on the use. You have to have perimeter landscaping, brother, street line buffers and so forth. And the issue that we've encountered is that there's nothing in the file, there is no survey, not even an audit survey, it's all sketches. So that, that's kind of why we're here tonight because this would, I mean, this proposal requires the special permit, yes.
So we definitely have to have that or is there a way that we can figure something out for it at all? With all these parking spots, is that possible?
So, the thing is that, and we went through this, there's parking space requirements, so it's one space for every.
150 square.
I wrote it down, 150 square feet of gross floor area within the store, including the storage spaces. And we didn't go through all of those counts because we were pretty confident it's going to be more parking than what is in the parking lot. We understand that you don't use them all every day. However, that's what the regulations is. So the thought was, if he got the survey, he would go through and show the updates and then move the parking, you know, move the vacuum.
But if the owner of the building is not willing to do that, then how do you?
So typically tenants pay for it. So, and this, this is why we're here tonight.
Because, you know, the thing is like, you know, my kind of work is like, for example, like if we talk about the air machine. Air machine is like, this is a basic need sometime when you don't have enough air in your tire. So we have lots of people like coming to our store, you know, and, you know, they are very much appreciated that we have a machine working and they are able to fix their tire, you know. So it's something that, you know, I know, you know, if you look at the business point, you know, it's probably making like a few cents for us too. But, you know, it's also, it's a basic need, you know, especially like who wants to get air, they always look at the gas station. Like, they will go to a gas station to get air in their tire. I mean, if it's, just think about yourself or myself, if I, I need air in my tire, if I go to a gas station just to get gas every day and if they don't have the air, you know, or if it's always broken. So they will get upset, you know, we've been hearing a lot of complaints that, you know, oh, we come here all the time for the gas, but your air machine is, is not working here.
Right, but your air machine was behind the building.
No, actually it's front of the building.
Oh, it was in the front of the building?
It's in the front.
Okay.
It's on this, it's on the corner there on the sidewalk next to.
But if you put in your new machine, it's wider than this or not?
No, actually it's exact same size.
But you're, the people have, I'm just saying, have been going to get air at that spot.
Right. So if you, let me just, so if you see right here, so this is kind of drive-through, coming from the backside of the building.
Right.
So if you just imagine like somebody is sitting down putting air and the car comes, you know, it's, it's not, I don't feel like it's the safe, you know. I mean, the air machine has always been there, you know, nothing happened, you know, for God's written, you know, you never know. Nothing happened, you know, for God written, you know, you never know. So I think, you know, if we, because here when they're putting the air, they're still using one parking spot. So if we move the uh, air machine to this located, new location. So this will be like in front of the gas uh pumps, like when people putting gas. They can see right straight ahead, like you know, they'll just have to move forward. And uh, stand there for like couple minutes, get air and they will be leaving, so.
Right, but your vacuum, which is very close to the road, it's taking up, you say one parking space. When someone vacuums their car, they open all the doors. I mean, it takes up a very big space and I don't know if that's.
Well, the vacuum won't take up like.
The vacuum itself, no, you bring your car up to it.
Well, it's gonna be, so it's in the center of the parking spot, so you still have like. This much on the side of this, you know, to open your doors.
So it's basically like right here is the three parkings. So if we first use like middle parking as a, uh, the air and vacuum station. So both side we have like full parking. So either somebody can uh, park their car on the right side or the left side of the air machine. And uh, the door will be open widely because, you know, just uh, think also like when we putting the air machine. Is not taking the whole parking, it's like uh, if when you have one car standing. And you try to open the door is different, but if you have just a machine. It's actually is leaving some space uh, from the parking as well, because it's gonna take only maybe two feet. So two feet is about the, from the parking, so. Both parking on the sides, right and left, gonna have a more space than like the normal. Cars are standing and uh, you know, doing something. Cause if, if it's like one car standing and we try to open the door, it's different. But since it's just the machine and it's gonna leave the space for both sides, you know.
Guys, don't really. I, I don't. I personally just don't see where that's a good space for it. Does it say vacuum or anything on the vacuum, like signs?
It says uh.
It'll say vacuum station.
I'm just asking.
You know, it says uh, on the machine like a sticker, air and vacuum. So people will know that this is like uh, the air.
Two, right, it's a two thing that comes down.
Yeah.
You can pull it and yeah.
It's just like any other place have a vacuum, you know.
Uh huh.
So it's like a round shape, you know, and it has a sticker, this is uh, air and vacuum. So you, it's your choice, whatever you like to use.
It's kind of like Maui, you know how they in the back of the firewall?
Yeah.
They have a bunch of them back there.
Well, some of the pets, that's why.
They don't put a sign on top of it.
That's why they're full with your logos, how it's locked out on the bottom.
Yeah, we were waiting for the gas station.
Because there's too many signs.
Right, yeah.
And then, yeah, so that would go right up against the closer to the road.
So. What are the next steps really?
So, so the request here tonight is.
Just to discuss.
No, it's, it's to, if your last meeting you made a discussion, you made a decision. That you wanted a full A two survey.
Okay.
The applicant is saying that the survey is expensive. And the property owner is not gonna help them with it. So they want you to waive the survey, but we have a non-conforming situation where we're eliminating another parking space. Which was brought up at the last meeting, which you can't create new non-conformity.
Right.
So kind of a sticky situation. I, I mean, I, I get the point about the financial part of it, but from a zoning regulation perspective, your job is compliance. Anyone online wanna?
Yeah, do you, does anyone have any, Brenda?
I guess my question is, has he approached the property owner to see if he could negotiate to split the cost of it? It's hard for us to look at this as with a drawing. Without the information of an A two survey to really make an educated decision on this. Think we're limited with the information we have.
I definitely did that, you know, and even uh, talking about like splitting the cost as well. But they, they don't wanna be part of it, they're like, you know, we never heard like, you know, the um. I'm just gonna say that whatever they told me, so they told me like, you know, they never had this kind of situation. In uh, any of their other gas station, so they said, you know, since this, it's you, you doing it, so you know. They basically said you have to, you know, afford the cost. So they don't wanna be part of it because they're not doing uh, any changes uh, for themselves, you know, or anything like that.
Is there, have you thought about putting the vacuum and air thing in a different location? Than that corner that takes up a parking space, is there an alternative spot?
So, so the, right now, just to kind of clarify, the air tank is on a sidewalk. So when you would pull in, you would obstruct the parking space, but it's also near a driveway that sometimes people go around the building. Cause the parking, the parking lot, the back parking lot is angled, so when you pull out, you would go around the building.
Right.
To, to, to exit, so that's the existing circumstance, the proposed circumstance to stop the blocking. Of the parking space in the drive aisle is to put it closest to the street in the perimeter buffer. In the parking space, eliminate a parking space over there to have this space, the problem is. There, there's, there's no survey in the file and you do have a survey requirement and I have no way. To uh, determine compliance and that was the reason for the survey. And the applicant is asking not to pay for the survey because it's too much of an expense and he already purchased a vacuum.
It will cost us about like four to five thousand dollar, you know, uh, once we get installing everything. So paying another four thousand, you know, doing the A two survey. It's uh, ten thousand dollars just for the air machine, you know. So for me, you know, it's a little bit hard because again, you know, I only run the store part. You know, I don't uh, you know, own the gas, you know, there's another company who owns the gas. The property owner, we just pay the rent for the store and so we can. Small business like, you know, where we making, you know, not that much money that, you know, we can spend, you know. For like this kind of project, you know.
Well, you know, it's really a question of compliance and our hands are really tied, I think.
There's no other way to do it besides that, like nothing.
Well, we can't.
So the property is not compliant now, we were talking about this and then, so once the survey is done, then you have to show. There, there's gonna have to be some upgrades for compliance to show that you can make up for the extra parking spaces and so forth.
But you know, if you believe me or not, like uh, these, the area where we're putting the air machine and vacuum. This uh, was not uh, like, you know, the part of parking. Since we, I thought like uh, there is a space like, you know, when we were doing lining back in few years ago. So I did some linings here too, so we have uh, people know that they can actually park here as well, you know. So this corner is, was never been in use of as like, you know. Uh, really the parking, you know, again, you know, like you explained to me that they, you know. Since you guys don't have the surveys, we don't know if it used to be parking and they finished it, so but. Since I am running the store, I know it's been eighteen years. That space, you know, we utilize as ourself, you know. Uh, that, you know, there's a corner of the property that, you know, people don't know they can park over there. So we made like, you know, a few lines that uh, people can park like three cars. So but still, you know, that is a little bit far from the store, so nobody really wants to walk that far to. Park and come to the store when we have like uh, uh, so many parking around the building. So basically we have like uh, backside, the full backside, it's a big building. So backside is we have like four, five parking and then we have other side, we have four parking. So they never park in that corner that, you know, they have to walk all the way to store, you know.
But even on like a safety thing, wouldn't we rather get it away from the building to a safer spot, right?
Well, well, part of it is going through the whole A two survey, so, so the parking lot and the special exception would be designed, there's a whole section. On parking lots that has the dimensions of the parking spaces. Interior landscaping islands, perimeter islands, drive aisle widths and all of that. And because nothing's really happened and there is no survey, you're kind of opening up a little bit of a can of worms here. Because now you're, we don't know.
For.
Well, you might, yeah, might cause.
And, and that was the reason the commission was saying they wanted to see it as the special exception and to get um, that survey.
Okay, so.
Is there a reason you can't put it in the back in the sidewalk, behind the building?
Well, the backside.
The handicap is.
So, it's gonna be a bad, a bad spot for it.
We were actually gonna put like uh, the, remember the ice box? So we didn't do it because we wanna make sure like the handicap people can use the both doors, the front and the back. Cause we do have like a slope, uh, one side of the walkway, which like the handicap people can. You know, use that and come through the back door, uh, as well as the front door. So if we park like too much the walkways, that will be not good for like handicap people.
Is there any spot that's same level they've been? At all? You know, it, it is just tight here, right, no matter what safety wise, people coming in and out and coming around. And people coming in here all the time, just.
Part of, see, part of the, the whole special exception process is to improve all those things. You need to make them more accessible and have water and safer, so, so that's.
If I own the building someday, like when I own the property, you know, I, I would actually, no worries, I've spent that kind of money. But I don't know, like, you know, sometime, you know, we could have uh, issues with the landlord, our lease is over. So we don't know if we're gonna stay there for that long, you know, we do this kind of stuff, you know.
Nice. Without that A two survey, but then it would open up a can of worms for you. I don't see any way out of this myself. I don't know what everybody else thinks.
I agree.
Anyone else? Anybody?
Yeah, I know at one of my first commission meetings, must have been December fourth, we talked about. Um, gas stations and we brought a lot of them that were not conforming into conformity. Um, because we allowed, yeah, what was it?
Didn't bring them into conformity, we did a regulation change.
Okay.
Potentially make them more conforming for existing ones.
Okay.
I really, I guess we did have made them more conforming without doing anything.
Yeah.
But that regulation still doesn't work for this property, no.
Okay, um, this is just a broad question about all the parking we have in Old Saybrook. Um, and all our rules about how many spaces per a hundred and fifty square feet. Um, as a result, we have massive parking lots that are underused. And we just had this uh, treaty, save our shade presentation. Are we gonna do anything to change the regulations for parking spaces? To me, it just seems like it's. Too um, we're, we're requiring too many spaces.
So in this circumstance, if this property was to come in, into compliance. They would have to put in all the landscaping, so they don't meet. The street line landscaping buffer on two sides, they don't have street trees, they don't have the perimeter buffer. They don't have the rear buffer, that would all be there in this circumstance. So, so it's kind of a balance that way, so. And there are other options to you to have previous parking and alternative types of parking. But this lot doesn't, it, it's so non-conforming, we don't, I mean, I don't even have a survey in the file from the seventies, that's how non-conforming it is.
Cause they done some surveys, but they only did, done it like whatever they were required. Like we, we changed the, they changed the tanks uh, back in like two thousand fifteen, I believe, or sixteen. So that time, whatever the survey they needed, cause even I approached to that person who did the survey for them for. Uh, doing the tank part, I said, you know, maybe you have a A two survey, I can pay you some amount. And get from you, or you can do some work, you know, at uh, you know, a little bit less amount, you know, since you already done it. So answer, his answer was like, we use the previous uh, survey from the previous uh, property owner. So we just did whatever like we were supposed to do and we didn't take any like A two survey, you know, those kind of stuff.
So, but, but that was really a different type, so that survey was for underground tanks, it wasn't really for zoning purposes.
So they basically used also previous information and just came out with whatever they had to change. So but they, they said, you know, we, we, we're not able to help you. Cause I thought like maybe it will be cheaper to go through with them, you know, since they have the uh, most of the information. So, but they said, you know, we don't do the A two survey and we just done it whatever we were required, you know, to do it.
But we don't even have anything in the file as you went back to the seventies, right?
Well, no, the whole file, I'm saying, we don't, I mean, even in our non-conforming gas stations, like I pulled something out. From, you know, forty, fifty years ago, I, I know everything in there.
Yeah.
It is a sketch unfortunate.
Yeah.
And this is kind of what happens where these special exceptions trip is that we go through, something's proposed to be changed. And mainly, and now we don't have any survey for zoning purpose, no.
And there's no other place that you'd like this?
Uh, beside just the same place that we have the air machine, so this is our best bet, you know, to go. I mean, put it there and uh, because we need the air machine, you know, like everybody. Know that, you know, they're coming to the gas station and we have the air machine.
You probably have more people using the air machine than you would the vacuum.
Right, vacuum is like also, it's some people like, you know, they want to keep their car clean. And when they are putting the gas, you know, they think like same time, they can, they get a chance to take care of their car. So I mean, not uh, uh, all the time we're gonna be doing the vacuum, but you know. We have a machine which is like uh, you know, supplying both things, you know, so we just have um. Air and vacuum together.
Well, are we making a decision this evening?
Well, the, the decision was made at the last meeting for a survey.
We need.
This is the request to reconsider the requirement of the survey, which is the zoning rank. So, I, I mean, I don't know why you would postpone it again.
Yeah.
Unless there's some other information you need, but I, that, that would be the survey.
Yeah, so really unless you could come up with the survey. There's nothing more that we can do, really.
I mean, no matter what, we can still put it somewhere close to the building, right?
It probably make the most sense to replace it where it is.
Where it is, yeah.
Okay. Should we move it over, I mean, should we do something a little different to make it like safer or?
We're concerned is.
We got safe, yeah, yeah, got safety right there in that corner, right?
I'm just scared, you know, when somebody is like not paying attention, just putting air, sitting down. And the other people are driving by, you know, and they don't keep it far, you know, from them, it's.
Can you shift the, shift the propane tanks closer to the end of the building?
But that is gonna clo- bring it closer to the uh, where people coming out after putting the gas, you know. Cause that's also the thing, like we, you know how we have on number one and two? So when people are putting gas and, you know, finishing it up, they have to come out, you know. So that will bring closer towards that, you know.
There's a top right there, safety was.
Like for example.
But I guess where, what I'm going with i- is that if you push it further over. But I guess where, what I'm going with i- is that if you push it further over. You have mafia blocks in the parking spaces, the other spaces. So, you know, that's. And you're worried about people opening the doors. I mean, those blocks are technically a zoning violation. But I understand why it's there for the propane tank, yeah. So it's, you know, how do you jockey it around for an existing, this is why we keep getting to this. The survey point and that's why the commission requires.
No, I know, and I totally respect, you know, for the laws that you guys have, you know, but my thing is only that, you know. It's a, this, this is just like a better spot, you know, for something that we are trying to do, like, you know, we. But again, you know, it's totally up to you guys because, you know, the rules are rules. Uh but this place, you know, would be best for something like this, you know. Because it's gonna be a lot less work for me to just to replace the old machine where that is. Put it right there, it will cost me less money actually, but again, you know. Bringing towards the new place is just gonna give a better look to the property. That, you know, we are, we have a station where, you know, you can actually, you know, go there and do your thing. And you're not gonna be in the way, you know, it's just gonna be on the corner of the property, so.
I think what it's come down to is if you can't provide an A two survey, that we can't approve. Right? I mean, I can't think of, unless you can think of something else, I can't think of another thing. I mean, moving, we discussed kind of some options, you can't do it.
And what if we try to bring like towards the Alm Street, that this is kind of also like a.
On the other side, you mean?
Yeah, like where.
Right up against the street where the bomb booth is.
Because the bomb booth is not in use anymore, like it's still there, but you know. So that space we can maybe utilize for something like this.
Or bring a local one, you know, towards the side.
Yeah, towards the sign, you know, so it's more of, of, you know.
But you still don't have a survey, that's kind of the.
I know, you don't have the survey, wouldn't it be just, I. Wouldn't it be easier just to spend the money and get the A two survey?
My thing is this, you know, I'm gonna be honest to you, like uh. If I spend money, you know, on A two survey, for some reason, you know, we still couldn't do it. You know, I'm not the landlord that I can use this survey for something else in the future, like I spent the money. Okay, it it didn't work this time, you know, for something like this, but I will be able to use in the next project or something. If it's landlord, it's different because you're doing initial investment.
Right.
Like, you know, in the future, some upcoming projects, you can use the same A two survey, like you will have it in your records. Uh but someday you never know, maybe I buy the property and, you know, I will try to do compliance completely. Cause as uh Christina know, like, you know, we, I'm in this town, you know. We try to be very helpful, you know, with the police, you know, the. Just like a couple of weeks ago, they had an incident at my gas station, somebody was trying to run over the top, you know. So the police chief came at twelve o'clock to my store and made my guy to. Wake me up and told me like I have to come to the gas station and give us the footage. Because they had to, they had a very short time of the filing everything to record. So we had provided them, you know, the footage of the uh place, you know, so it was very useful for them. So we, we know that, you know, we wanna compliance with the everything, but in this situation. My hands are like, you know, it's it's a lot of money for me, you know, especially like in this kind of weather, we are just.
We understand, but we also have our rules. And and just so you know, I mean, you can look up all of the zoning rules and regulations on.
On the computer.
Yeah, on the website.
So like say, say we kept it where it is, right? Could we put a mafia block in that spot and put it on that? On the very end one?
So the parking spaces are supposed to be unobstructed.
Unobstructed?
In parking space with any kind of a block in it, that's a zoning violation.
Then what if we put like the block up on the, on the wall, we put it up on the walkway, just because the vacuum's gotta be up no matter what, right, so.
Well, I I mean, it's really up for you guys to come up with. You know, the the design, you know, as to what you're doing, the problem is without, you know, the survey moving it all over the place is gonna be. Because we can't, so part of one of the, there's a whole section in the regulations on what's required with the survey in order to do this. And in this circumstance, there's just nothing there where I can even try to use an old survey, so. I I I'm not really sure how to guide you, that's why you're in front of the commission, because, yeah.
But if we don't put like, you know, the mafia block in the parking space, but we. We would need to use like on the the same space where we have the air machine right now. Just to give a little bit raise, you know, from the, from the floor, you know. So we would, you know, use where the air machine is right now, we will just use the same space. Like not moving anywhere else, but we will just.
But it's that, as long as you don't obstruct the parking.
No, yeah, it'll, it'll fit onto the sidewalk, so, yeah, yeah, cause it's not, you know, it's like the side of this thing, pretty much, a little shorter. But if we put it there and place, get that air machine out of there that's there now, put the block on the walkway.
Maybe there's a way to just better reconfigure it, that's what I was kind of getting at.
And it won't mess up the park.
But even with the propane, try to reconfigure it, I mean, you've got.
I don't think we have to, I think there's enough space to the left of the propane.
Yeah, it's like. But we, because we're gonna move that the other one, because that's not working, so we don't wanna have like two air machines, you know. So we will remove.
We're removing them.
Yeah, we're removing them.
Cause we already have the block and we have the vacuum machine, so. If the parking is gonna be the biggest issue, obviously, without the, without the survey. If we can put the block right on the sidewalk and put the machine there in place of the air machine. They're still gonna be in the same spot, right? And it's just gonna be higher. And it won't mess up the parking spot. Cause people park there all the time to get air, so it's always been obstructed all the time, you know, that parking spot is, right? So people are always.
But getting the air and getting your car vacuumed are two different things, I mean, the vacuum is gonna take.
It's mostly for the, for the air thing, one than anything.
Yeah.
You know, the vacuum's not gonna be used as much as like going to a car wash, right? So it's just gonna be up close to the building as part of it, so.
I I don't, I I can't, I just can't wrap my head around it, I don't. I can't tell.
Can you return the vacuum and just replace the air machine?
No, because this, I think, unit came from like um. From Ohio or somewhere, you know, with the special delivery box, you know, was shipped by the third party, so.
Just kind of throwing out ideas, cause I'm exhausting all the ideas, unfortunate.
I mean, if we're not messing up the parking spot, I mean, why can't we put the mafia block there with the machine there? Cause it's still gonna be doing the same thing that it always does, not changing anything except lifting up a little bit higher. Making it more, a better of an air machine, cause people go there all the time, especially now that it'd be an updated.
And I think, I think we had it like before too, but we, that machine was not working, you know, so we got rid of it. But it's.
It was right there with it?
Yeah, with the, with the air thing, you know.
How long ago was that?
That's uh some time ago, you know.
Like, how long ago?
I would say maybe like eight years ago, or at least.
And you were there when it was?
Yeah, I I'm in the construction office.
I don't know what to say. This is, this is, this is a request to. Reconsider your requirement for a survey, so you need to make some kind of.
Well, if we, if we reconsider, what are we looking for then?
That, that's what this.
Well, that's the thing.
Cause we still have other.
We want your blessing, you know, like if we could do it without A two survey and we could do it the right way, you know, where, you know, it will not mess up. It will be more safe, you know, it will look good, but we need your blessings, you know, without A two survey, you know.
And you said it too, it cut over.
But if you want A two survey, then we're gonna have to use the same spot, you know.
Okay, what is, what is, we all think, what do you think?
I think we need the survey, if they're going to move it. If that's, you wanna move it, I don't see any way around that.
Well, if you, if we get a survey and you said you gotta do all this stuff, right? So you open up a can of worms, which you said before, right? Could create more problems. So, and it's costly to get that survey, and small business. So if we don't do the survey. Is that the best place, if we just put it in that same spot on a mafia block on the sidewalk?
Well, if we're requiring the survey and you can't produce it. Then we have to make a decision. So what's Laura, last comments?
Okay, um I I hear what they're saying, uh I'm always searching for air and vacuums. And I know where they are in Old Saybrook and it would be nice to have one there. Um and I feel for you with the cost of the survey, I'm wondering maybe if you can negotiate with the um surveyor. To get a better, a better rate, so that we can move forward.
I can look into that too.
I think probably your best bet.
I think it, I think you should do that, because I'm inclined to say without the survey.
But let's say, you know, because I, I know your time is very important, so. If we cannot, if I'm not able to negotiate, I get it at the rate I can afford. Uh then, you know, we, we can put it, we can just replace the old machine or old wherever the.
Well, you have to then talk to Chris, do you want?
That's how we ended up here. It's what I'm saying, so, it's the discussion of replacing it, relocating it, and then there was no survey. And there's a number of nonconformities, so at your last meeting, you decided you wanted a survey.
Right, so the survey was expensive, that's why we're here tonight. Where you try to negotiate a survey or no?
I I can try, you know, like.
Why don't we leave it that way, then? You can try to negotiate a survey, because otherwise.
No, like, my question is like, do I have to come back again, like, just replacing?
Well, if you get the survey, that's what I was saying, should he see you or does he have to come back to a meeting?
Well, the survey would be, the request for the survey was to obstruct the parking space and put. The closest to the road. That was the initial discussion, so now the question that he is asking is can he just replace the air machine with a vacuum and air machine without?
No, he was gonna try to negotiate the survey.
Oh, right, but I, unfortunately, I don't think there's gonna be much negotiation. Because most surveyors are several months out, so I think it's kind of unrealistic.
Yes.
Expectation, um you know, I mean, it may be even a few hundred dollars, it's not gonna be a little percent difference or anything to that. Um nature.
So we really haven't come to an amicable decision or agreement of what you can do, as far as I can see.
Well, you pulled all the members.
I did, and everyone wants the A two survey.
So that's your answer?
And the answer is?
But if he was going to leave it there.
That's the question for you.
We still would need the cert.
Right.
That's the question for you.
Okay, I thought the server was predicated on him moving.
So if the air machine broke and you replaced the air machine without coming to you.
Could you have done that?
I I don't think I'd be running out there with a zoning violation to replace an air machine.
If you replaced like with like, if you replaced an air machine with an air machine, but this becomes a different issue because. It's with the vacuuming component, which brings in safety and brings in other issues.
Right, I mean.
Well, this is why I'm here, I, this is your special, so the gas stations are special permits. Met through the requirements, it's not working, so it's me bringing this to you for guidance.
Okay.
Property or the store owner is looking for guidance for me.
So basically, like, we can just put machine there, but we can just say like, it's no vacuum, just the air machine?
Well, the air machine is already there, right?
But it's not working.
Well, it's already there, so fix it.
No, we can't fix, that's why we bought a new one, the the machine that.
But you, but what you bought was not a replacement, you bought. A replacement that has something else added to it, right? The vacuum. Is that right? Am I, I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, no, that's, that's true, like, you know, we bought a machine which has air and vacuum, right? So but, you know, if we have, somebody is getting like.
I understand.
Air there, you know, they can do the vacuum. I don't get it, like, you know, why we can have like the different machine, which is doing the air and vacuum.
Well, I think we all agree that our last meeting, that we all wanted the A two survey and you don't have that, so um. Michael still wants to have an A two survey, I stop with the A two survey.
Yes, stay in touch.
So I think you established everybody wants a survey several times.
Yeah, okay.
What, what, can they replace the air machine with an air and vacuum machine in its existing location? That's, I think, the question.
That wasn't the question, the question was, do we still want the A two survey?
Right, but then their most recent question, so I think you've established you want an A two survey. But the most recent question is, is, obviously, it's not working to move it. Because we just talked about ten different locations to move it.
Right.
So now they're asking, can they replace the air machine with an air and vacuum machine in the same, in the same spot? Without coming back to you.
Okay, well.
I I would be, if it's in the same spot, I think I would say all right.
Okay, well, what do you ladies think?
I agree. Yeah, if it's in the same spot, put in the uh two for one. But his concern was about safety, and I think it was a valid concern. That to put it there, the reason he was asking to move it was from a safety perspective. And can we honestly endorse something? That may create a difficult situation, a more dangerous situation.
So y- your answer is no.
Right.
And my answer is no. But that's two, two yeses and two nos.
Um, I'm, I'm concerned about safety as well.
Pardon me?
Is it possible for him to come back one more time? We have five people and we can.
Um, I wanna move on, so.
Well, I mean, we had, what in our last meeting.
Where's the minutes? But Laura, you were concerned about safety as well.
Right, especially when I look at this map and I do see that there's not a lot of space.
Right.
But it has worked well for the air machines, but I also understand that when you get your car vacuumed, you open up all your doors. So it seems like I, there'd have to be some sort of barrier to keep people from cutting that corner. And I don't know, I mean, for that.
But if we put like a barrier, then it's gonna be again coming in the parking lot.
So I guess where I'm gonna, I'm just looking at the minutes from your last meeting. And all the regular members were here and the vote or the the discussion was a survey, so I don't really see. Um right now, we've got two aldermen seated, I don't see what we're gonna get for a different answer if we go back to the same.
Yeah, no.
Five members from the last meeting.
So, so is it a, is it a motion to deny then?
It's guidance, so what I think you're seeing for guidance is that you want the A two survey. If it's gonna move anywhere other than the location, and their question is, can they add in the vacuum? With the air in the same location in your split.
Right.
But, you know, the air machine is always stayed at the same place before. So I mean, you know, if we, we we're gonna have an air machine, I mean, we can't have a gas station without a air machine. So we need a. So we need a, put it somewhere.
Well, your air machine was already there, but you, when it broke, you purchased something without. Asking if you could do that. Without coming to.
No, mostly gas stations, like, you know, they do have vacuum and, um.
Our, like she said, our last minutes talked about the A two survey, I, I know that you, it broke, but. I mean. I don't see. Anything. Other than what we discussed in our last meeting, we wanted an A two survey. Um. If you fix the air machine, fine, because it was already there. But I don't agree with the, um, the vacuum. Because I, I've seen cars at vacuum places and. That all the doors are open, it's not like going to put air in your tires, it's definitely different than that.
So are you saying the addition of a vacuum to replace the air machine in the location that it's in now? Is another use and it's expanding the special permit, that's why you want the survey? I, I think that's where you're going with that.
Yes.
And you can't return, you can't just go back in and, and exchange it just for an air machine? No.
Can you shut off the vacuum component?
I don't think, like, you know, just remove the hose, you know, like, people think like this is just their machine.
Well, you're gonna have to do what you have to do, because it's getting late and I wanna move on with the agenda. I mean, we've gone round and round with this.
Is it possible for you to sell this and to replace it with just an air machine?
No, it's some, this is not the item that, you know, a lot of people gonna be looking to buy.
The answer is no.
I mean, I can look into the A two survey, I should not promise, you know, um, we will. Find a bus, you know, to see if we can find somebody who wants to do it. At the price that I can afford, or, you know.
Okay.
So the conclusion?
The conclusion is, we don't have an A two survey. That we can't go further with this. Is all I can say. If you can come back with an A two survey, or.
Or just replace it as an air machine. Or an A air machine.
The air machine, I, I mean, that's already there, yes, if you. Can, like Chris said, or somebody said, turn off the vacuum part of it. But it's, we're not approving that. Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good night, sorry. Okay, are you doing the workshop?
Yes.
Okay. Discuss problematic regulations for possible tax amendments. You sent that to us, but I don't have a copy of that.
I'll make you copies, I'll be right back, you have copies at home?
I printed mine.
Okay. Do you, Laura?
You're muted, Laura.
Yes, I'll get it.
All right. I, you know, really, we went around and around and I can't do it anymore, I mean.
No, no, I, I understand, you, 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 you gotta try and help some.
We did try to help them, but every time we had a suggestion, he said, no, because, oh, I mean, really?
I just don't know why he cannot. Return that item, I, I.
Well, he wasn't wanted without. Or finding out that he could, I mean, that's just not right.
He did a really good job in terms of, um. Making the argument on his behalf. You know, he was very articulate and he did a great job with that, and it was very compelling, but it comes down to regulations and it comes down to safety.
Right.
Yes. Yes.
You were right, Brandon, he was concerned about the safety. He was concerned about the safety.
Yeah. Yeah, well. I'm sorry that thought happened, but.
Yes, because you're trying to help somebody out and somebody has a small business and.
They've been here for a long time and.
But why is he responsible for the vacuum and other, when the gas station person usually is the one who owns the pumps? And that type of thing goes with it usually, so I don't understand why.
Right, because you wouldn't make the tell gasoline if you didn't have that.
Right, yeah.
You'll go to another facility.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if he had agreed in the beginning when he maybe leased. The store part.
It used to be, I thought it was mobile, right, it was mobile before they just changed over to, uh.
I think it was always golf, wasn't it?
No, I think it was.
Chucky's or?
It was called Chucky's, yeah, or something.
Yeah, but the gasoline I thought was a mobile.
It was mobile, just switched to golf, they just didn't upgrade it.
Yeah, this, this, the more I think about, the more there was something wrong with what he was. Saying that. At home, that he could not sell it back or just.
Yeah, I, and I, I'm sorry, but.
There you go.
Me. All right, okay.
All right, so, sorry for getting this to you, a little bit delayed for the workshop, obviously been talking about this, I guess we've been. Delayed because we've had so many other petitions to amend the regulations. So just for our new members, uh, what we do periodically. As, as we're reviewing applications, we find regulations that. Conflict or potentially there's issues with, or they don't make sense, or we think they need to be clarified, or the laws changed, or maybe come illegal. So, pretty much almost once a year, we. Have what we call a housekeeping session. And what I do is I keep track of all your comments for the most part through a year and then we get a bunch together. Then we go through and we fix the problematic. Regulations that were discussed. So, um. We can just start with page one and I can run through them and then. If you've had a chance to review them, you can provide a comment if that works.
Yes, go ahead.
Sure.
Okay, so, um. The first proposal, section nine definitions. Um, we have a definition for billboard. And at one of the meetings, um, it was suggested a billboard sign will not include any sign approved as a special exception use. Just to remove that from the definition because it really has no bearing on. On the definition, why are we talking about whether it's a special exception use under the definition, so the thought was just to clean that up and remove that text. Any comments?
No.
Um, when we were talking about gas stations, we had a gas station petition, or we had several. There was a discussion about what is a shopping center. Um, and it was kind of interesting as we tangled, untangled the regulations. We ended up in the parking section of the regulations where it talked about no less than four businesses. Um. Would be in a shopping center and that's how. The shopping center parking regulation was determined. So the thought was it would make sense just to define. Shopping center rather than have it buried within a parking regulation. So, um, this somewhat mirrors what. Is in the parking regulation, you just had to tweak it a little bit, so a shopping center would be a group of no less than four business establishments that made good retail. Personal service theaters, restaurants with a public vehicle parking area shared in common.
Theaters is. That's a huge building, theaters.
But we did have several theaters that come down.
Yeah, we did, but.
So it just.
You never know.
Yeah, you don't, but.
I don't picture theaters coming to town.
Any comments? Okay, at some point, um, I think this was over a zoning matter, zoning enforcement matter, I know it was a zoning matter. Um, section ten point six point four of the regulations came up. And as I was discussing with our attorney, he determined it was inconsistent with the change in the statute and illegal. So, um, the. Letter, the writing in the, um, just kind of that small aerial font. Is from the Connecticut general statutes. And the proposed. I don't have that. Did I lose the text here? What? Oh, the proposed text clarified, no. I might have printed the wrong version for you. So when, after the IT issues with our first. Um, after we got the Save Our Shades set up. Um, it ended up that I went upstairs and then my computer completely logged up, so I think I printed the wrong one for you.
Well, on the next page, the proposed text, I'm gonna correct the inconsistency between the state statute and the current zoning regulation. Is that the one that should have gone on the first page? Maybe it was printed wrong? Is that section ten?
Yeah, so that should actually get moved, so that's the page you're getting, so that's correct, that needs to get moved up.
Yeah.
Um, but the text with the next, the new section ten point six point four. This is regarding the discontinuance of a non-conforming use, this was drafted by our attorney. So I think it's. Something we need, yeah?
Yeah, I can see, I'll change that. Yeah, I saw that today, because I printed these out at work and then I didn't type it down, but I was reading them. And then I saw this and I said, oh, I think that one is good.
So. Um, the next one is a proposed text. To clarify rooftop deck language. Uh, I'm not sure if our newer members are aware of the rooftop deck situation. Um, but what's happened is that the zoning commission historically has not. Um, allowed rooftop decks off of half stories. Um, and there's been several, um. Rooftop decks that have gone to the zoning board of appeals, the zoning board of appeals has granted variances and in one case. Um, they decided that they. Had some disagreement with the regulation and there was some back and forth. And the zoning commission, the zoning board of appeals wrote to the zoning commission. Um, for clarification and actually suggesting amending the regulations for rooftop decks. And the zoning commission. Responded to the zoning board of appeals, that they did not want to do that, they didn't think it would be a good idea to have people. You know, particularly on non-informing residential lots that don't need. The houses don't need setbacks, to have people. On the second story or third story of a house having a rooftop. Um, gathering or party and it, and also from the aesthetics of it, it's. You know, it encourages flat roofs, which really don't have as appealing of architecture in certain cases, there was a number of things that were discussed. So, uh. After that conversation, the zoning commission asked. Uh, that. Um. We, we fixed this, there were some suggestions. And, uh, this is what we came up with. And. Or there was some comments from different members, I should say, and then my thought was also maybe just to define a rooftop deck. Because there were some discussion. Back and forth saying that a deck. Wasn't a use, it was an architectural feature and the zoning commission said, well, it really is a use, it's not. You know, it's exciting, it's not there, I mean, it, it does have a function, so this is the proposal. Uh, with some comments from some time ago from members. And then I put together this rooftop deck, so I don't know if you have any initial comments? I'm good.
I am too.
All right. So the next regulation, if we're ready to move along. Is that, um, in section three, there's a little section in the, like a bullet point on the side. And, um, it talks about the commission may require bonds, so somehow. I don't know, we missed this one, but, um, the commission's authority. To require bonds was eliminated by changes in the law, so this one is also. Just kind of a housekeeping to make it. Make the law.
Good.
Okay, um, section nine definitions defines a walkway. And in section sixty-two, parking access and circulation, sixty-two point three B identifies walkways as being concrete only. Which conflicts with the definition of walkway. As we know, people could have walkways made of different materials, not just concrete, it could be pavers, pervious pavers. So, um. The suggestion was to, under sixty-two point three B, walkways to expand it. To allow our other ADA compliant material with a minimum width of five feet for pedestrian circulation.
Makes sense.
Okay, so accessory apartment definite, um, accessory apartments as. Um, we've always had accessory apartments about a year or two ago, there were some changes. Up at Hartford and the laws changed and the zoning commission decided to have. Include in their regulations, which they didn't before, to allow for detached accessory apartments, just to promote alternatives. Um, to the single family house or altern, or. Or apartments, um, just hope with the hope of maybe having some additional living space. So just a few things I think that came up, and this is, I think, the second time we've tweaked it. Um, we knew it wouldn't be perfect to begin with and as applications come in. Um. I, I'm identifying certain things, which some of them I brought to the commission. So. Uh, the proposal, the first proposal is amend accessory apartment to remove text requiring any finished areas in the decas garage to count towards the area of the accessory apartment. For example, a garage may be used. By the primary, so the primary occupant. Of a dwelling. So you have a, a single family house. And then you have a garage with an apartment over it. If. The person who. Has the primary dwelling wants to make an area that's finished in there, maybe it's an exercise room or something like that. We originally could go on through, that would not be allowed. So when we created the regulation, the purpose of not allowing any finished area in the garage. To count towards the accessory apartment was that it would go through and just kind of, it would just be a hallway or something like that, that you would go up to. The apartment or there was a proposal, someone wanted to kind of put a room. On the first floor, but the more. I reviewed these and the more we have coming through with all the other requirements. It has caused situations where, especially if you're fitting out an existing garage. Um, with the square footage requirements for the accessory apartment. Um, sometimes it just makes it so that people can't really design it, and, and the thought would be. Is to let. The property owner, you know, I mean, if the property owner has some area. That they want to designate for their own use, because you could have the first floor of a garage. With a finished area that the apartment dweller has no access to, if the primary owner wants to put something. In there, like a little exercise room, the answer would be no, according to this. Because it would be contributed to the accessory apartment, and if that accessory apartment, which most of them are maxed out when they're constructed. Um. It, it doesn't work, so this would just give that flexibility to the architect or the designer and the homeowner. Any comments? So. The one thing, this one, uh, the next one is that. We put in a requirement that the accessory apartment had to be located no closer to the street than the primary dwelling. And what I'm finding is this is a little bit of a problem. And I think this was geared more towards smaller lots. And what's happened is you have a lot, so say you have a house on a big lot on Boca Road or Schoolhouse Road, and there's an existing house that's closer to the street and it's small. And they can put a house in the back. I mean, most people don't want to build something that looks awkward. So someone came in and it was on Boca Road and where they were proposing the primary house. You wouldn't even see the primary house, but because the existing primary house was in the front, they were told no and they needed a variance. They never sought the variance. So the thought was maybe to eliminate that to allow for some flexibility.
Didn't we talk about that?
We did talk about it. Remember we had a variance, someone came through initially. And what had happened was there was an existing house and they went for a variance because of the shape, the lot was long. They put the two houses next to each other, so because they couldn't put one behind the other. And it ended up that the appearance of it, it kind of, it almost kind of looked like two houses. It didn't look that awkward. They were somewhat consistent.
Right.
So that was, I put that in there. That was in my notes if you would like to keep that. Any thoughts?
I like this.
That's a tricky one because lots are so varied.
It is, and I mean, that's the whole thing. So you could have a house on a lot that's a perfectly good bungalow. And then they want to build a main house and what it would do is force the property owner to tear down the little house to put the big house in the front and the little house behind it. And the reality of it is if you're going to keep the little house, you know, the smaller one and I don't, it is kind of tricky.
I guess it depends on the street view.
Well, I think for the most part, most property owners and in these accessory apartments, the property has to be owner occupied. For the most part, I mean, people don't really want to put something ugly or awkward on their property. I mean, that's just my, I mean, someone's putting in with the cost of building, I mean, which is through the roof and the amount of money that they're putting in. People typically strive to build something. You know, it's not as though these apartments or these dwellings, you know, are, can be both rented. So someone, the owner has to live somewhere on the property. But that's. All right, should I move along? I think so. All right, so Bob brought this up a while ago. Bed and breakfast transient lodging is allowed in residential and business districts, but in the B4 zone and potentially others, we prohibit dwelling units. So it's a little bit of a conflict. So what I did, and I just see that I missed one, was I went through and tried to remove dwelling. So in the first, under A, there should be, there's one more dwelling that should be removed.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. So what I did is as I went through, I just tried, I went everywhere it said dwelling and tried to reword it to remove the conflict in the zones that dwellings are prohibited. And I didn't get into the content of rewriting. This is just, we'll fix it so it makes sense and. So C, the dwelling should be. Yep. Well, I put the dwelling or that or that affects us, so that would address the business zone.
Well, indeed, so I'm a little confused. Will preserve the architectural style and integrity of the building as a dwelling?
In a residence district.
Okay. And the floors above ground level will be located inside the dwelling. In the event that the dwelling is a historic structure of the use, including any modifications to the dwelling. And that's.
I cut out dwelling with the building.
Because there were so many dwellings.
I just wanted to, as I started removing dwelling, I said, well, if I change it this way, it's not going to preserve the single family residential, you know what I mean? Look in a residence district, which is.
Yeah. Sarah, can you read this stuff? She didn't. All said, these. Just this stuff, so.
I get it. We ordered them from a printer and she probably grabbed a set and they probably badly didn't do it.
I have a free help, I'm trying to do it. I stuck them in there anyway.
So my hand mute.
No, you're on.
So it seems like there are Airbnbs that are not 20, 2,000 square feet and that the owner doesn't live there.
We don't regulate Airbnb. This is a bed and breakfast according to the zoning regulation. So Airbnb are not regulated by the zoning commission. That would be in ordinance, potentially through the selectmen's office, the commission. It has kind of consistently said, we don't really want to get into the business of regulating rentals. So I mean, that, I don't know if that still stands now, but that's kind of a totally, it's a different discussion. So this was just kind of a quick fix to remove the conflict, you know, the conflict.
Okay.
Bring it up. Any other thoughts?
I don't even know of that many inns, if you want to call them that, in town.
Yeah, these regulations, I think, were originally came with the Deacon Timothy Pratt House and James's transparency. That's really how they were introduced. They were never designed, like I said, for Airbnb. It was, I think, there's, I don't know, there's another Airbnb that we permitted a few years ago. I don't know if they ever went through with it, but there really aren't a lot. I think, I think with Airbnb, people, I don't know, either demand for a bed and breakfast, but a bed and breakfast kind of has the nice little, you know, you have your breakfast.
Right.
Portion to it, so it's a little bit different. All right, so do you have any other regulation fixes that we found errors or anything with that you can think of? So I guess what I'll do is maybe email the members that are not here, see if they had any comments. This works for everyone.
Sure.
And incorporate them in and then maybe I'll just see what comes back and I'll talk to, either schedule a public hearing if you think it's not too soon.
No, I think, I think you should.
Unless something comes out of the comments that there's something huge that we need to go over. Is that what you'd like to do?
I'm okay with that.
All right, and then we'll address those.
When you, when you do talk to them, though, make sure you.
Yeah, I just marked that up. Yeah, thank you. That was probably.
What was the matter of putting it in a computer sometimes?
I appreciate you catching that.
I saw it at work, actually, and then I just.
So what I was doing was I was trying to put them in order, the nine definitions, the tens, and then I moved, I started shifting.
That's fine.
All right, and then it has to be reviewed obviously by our attorney as well.
Okay, good. Was this part of the committee representative staff reports?
No, so committee representative and staff reports. I did send today to you a appeal of my decision on a denial for a request to modify a variance approval. I don't have that authority. And there was also a variance request relating to a modification to a rooftop deck. For the members who have been on the commission, I kind of touched on this a little bit earlier. For our new members, we did have some history back and forth with rooftop decks. And the zoning board of appeals, and I did send all of this to everyone here, sending a letter asking the zoning commission to amend their regulations to allow rooftop decks. And the zoning commission had a meeting and went through a number of reasons as to why, if anything, they would strengthen the regulations so that we didn't have a house where you have somebody, you have your first floor, your second floor, and then you have this on the third floor, so to speak, you just have this giant flat roof with a deck. So I bring this to the commission because I know this has been of interest and back and forth with the ZVA. So I just thought I would inform you of the appeal and the request to modify the variance.
Yeah, I mean.
So do you want to comment on this to the ZVA or do you have any, or just?
I already answered your email.
Well, that's. I was emailing you as the chairman.
As the chairman of the committee.
But you didn't know you were chairing, so.
Well, I started that feeling I wasn't going to be here after you did that, but.
So the question is, in the past, sometimes the zoning commission has commented to the zoning board of appeals on variances that they may not be too fond of.
What traded this? Was there?
Oh, about the rooftop things? Well, we have been discussing that for a while, but someone went, I guess.
Historically, and I did send some background information to you, but it was a little late. So historically, the zoning commission is not allowed for rooftop decks off of the, if you have a one-story house, you can have a deck. If you have a two-story house, you can have the deck. And especially with the flood zone where the second story is really the first floor. So the discussion was that there were a number of variances to the zoning board of appeals requesting rooftop decks or decks off of half stories, which under section nine are prohibited. So there was this request. For my interpretation, and some of the folks on the ZVA really didn't agree with my interpretation. And then the zoning commission has always held that interpretation. So what I did was the, I talked to the zoning commission and it kind of backed up that interpretation. And then when, and said to ZVA, this isn't really something we want to change. And, you know, and there were a number of reasons. It's, you know, somewhat intrusive. You have, you know, people 25, 30 feet above you, you know, in the air, having a giant party. You know, people dropping things off of them. There was a whole bunch of different, the architecture, you know, and I granted flat roofs, you know, were used for widows' walks. We had that discussion. But for the most part, people really aren't building widows' wash, to wash their sailors to come home. Proceed, they're, they're for different purposes. And the decision was to, to keep the regulation as it is and strengthen.
Prohibited.
It is prohibited.
Right, and the ZVA wanted that.
CPA wanted us to take in the first.
Okay, because they didn't want all the applications.
The thing is CPA, a variance hardship, they don't know the meaning of the word hardship.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, but.
No, that's fine. So they just wanted, they didn't want people coming to them and then.
They didn't want to, they had some of them that they didn't want to turn it down and they had no purchase. I think that was really, so that's where this went, the back and forth.
Yeah.
So how do you want to proceed?
I'll mark right in the letter. I meant rather, sorry.
Direct.
I mean.
So is that an agreement by the commission?
That's mine.
No, I just.
Yes?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so you're directing me to contact your attorney to write a letter to the ZVA about the most recent variance modifications. Or the, the appeal, anyway. Okay, the next one. So, so that you're aware, I did send out certified letters to the remaining businesses who still have their COVID outdoor seating and we don't know the fate. So I'm working on it. I also did send out a whole slew of letters about the flags on the Boston Close Road and a number of other illegal signs. Some folks have just flat out ignored them, the orders, so it's, I'm working on it.
Okay.
And that complying. And the other request that came through, so the Little Pub is going to be coming to you for a special exception permit because they expanded their parking lot with gravel in the back some time ago after they opened and then they want to keep their COVID outdoor seating. And I'm not sure if you're aware, they have their property, but they also purchased the house to the left and additional land. And what, we did talk at one point that they were coming in, they're waiting for a new survey. And they did retain Joe Wren. And what they would like to do, their last request was that they decided that they thought it would be fun to have some goats out in the back. And it actually, I guess, it's kind of, it's almost like a little petting zoo. I know people will bring their grandkids over there and I guess you feed them. So they know they have to come in, they're going to come in for. So, um, they know they have to come in. They're going to come in for, um, to add an agricultural use to this. They also make honey there and, um, so that would be part of this kind of a whole interesting, and all the uses are allowed, which is nice in the B three. Um, but what they would like to do, and they will be patient and wait, um, is that they would like to move the chickens at the residential house up in the back next to the goats. Uh, but they do want to do that and run the risk of, um.
Cooking the chickens?
No, getting the, getting the, the commission upset that they did that before their special permit because they did say they were coming in with the goats. But we did have a meeting. We did go through all the uses. The owner is working on that special permit. So it's up to you. They can wait, but if they could move them, they would like to.
I don't care. I sell. Whatever. I don't know. What does everybody?
What does everybody think? What's, you need to direct me.
Um, might be a better place for the chickens.
Hmm?
Might be a better location for the chickens. So to keep the.
Okay.
Well, as long as they're in the, the, uh, appropriate coop to protect them from.
Yeah, they would just move their coop from.
So they lay eggs.
They do lay eggs. So the Little Pub, they also, they lay eggs and they also make honey. And, um, that honey is used in their food and now they're going for this agricultural kind of spin with this little, I guess you could call it a petting, petting zoo type of a farm to table.
As long as they don't kill the goats.
Or whatever. I don't, it's not, that's not the purpose.
Cheese, treat.
Okay, so, yes.
I've noticed the beehives in the past. If there are goats, can there then be llamas?
Well, that's, that's, I think, what they're going to talk about when they get to the agricultural uses. There's all kinds of ideas. So we need to kind of wrap it all in together, goats and.
Yeah.
Um, other animals. It's kind of cool. And then the bees.
And the bees.
Birds and the bees. Would they have that section on the hill for the wildflowers to pollinate for the bees? It's really well done.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. They've done a good job.
And that's actually where they want to move the chicken to chickens.
But they want to give them the green light to move them now.
Yes. They don't, they don't want to come in and have the commission say, you know, you talk to us about the goats and then you're coming for the special permit. They'd like to move them now, but they'll wait.
I, I don't see any reason they have to wait.
I'm fine with it all.
Okay. So they're, they can move the chickens.
Move.
And then come back in with their special exception, as long as they move it alone. Um, I think that's really all I have for you. What's your something for me?
I just want to go home.
Just to.
Anybody else?
This guy can get, I feel, feel for the guy because he doesn't.
I feel for the guy, but.
You're right. He overstepped his bounds by.
He went and bought that. Yeah. I mean, if we feel sorry for every single person that comes in here. I know. I felt bad too, but I thought to myself, no, I don't, uh, yes, you felt sorry for him.
I, I absolutely.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If we feel sorry for every person like him that comes in, what, you know?
We're never going to see him.
That's not why we're here.
Part of the problem.
So I think that's why, why not to feel sorry for them.
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
Because I feel harmed too, but.
These situations have come up where, I mean, folks have entered into leases and the property owners don't want to put a dime and they trip a special permit and they're like, what do you mean? I have to redo all these things. It, it's somewhat of a similar situation. Um, but I think a lot of.
I mean, because we're here to.
I think a lot of smaller business owners may not, or especially tenants, may not realize, you know, the scope of how complicated permitting could be.
Well, it's unfortunate.
The, the one thing that came up, uh, that I'm going to send your way to most likely is that the nine hundred building was sold and they did some facade renovations. And, um, they ended up, I got a preliminary sign plan for the building, wall signs and a sticker or a freestanding sign. And it had a number of tenants. So I, I know that there's been a church or a chapel that has been in there.
Yeah.
Has been an enforcement issue.
At the side.
Um, and, yeah, they have an illegal A-frame sign.
Yes.
The Artesian builders, we wrote them up with a cease and desist order. Um, they ignored that cease and desist order. Um, there's another, there's a few other businesses that are not, that I wasn't even aware had moved in, whether they moved in with the Colonel or the previous owner. But I think from our regulations, the chapel at minimum and the location and the pedestrian node is most likely going to trip a special permit with the commission. But the interesting part of it, and I'm going to go through and take a look at the, um, the file and the approvals is, and I've been in the upstairs, but it has sixteen, ended up with sixteen tenants overall.
I know. There's a lot of them in there.
Well, no, I mean tenant spaces. So I was going to look at and kind of see, I know there's some small spaces upstairs, but I, but I think overall, it, it seems to me that they're probably going to be headed your way for a, a special exception. So I'm trying to figure out what's allowed. I, I don't know, um, if there was, I know there was people in the basement at one point. So we'll see. And then I contacted the fire marshal and the building official. So I'm trying to kind of wrap my head around which, you know, I, I'm pretty confident I know which, um, tenants need certificates of zoning compliance at a minimum. But I need to familiarize myself with the old approvals to see if there's any, been any changes or expansion. And then I asked the health department, the fire marshal and the building official if they had anything too. So, um, that one will probably be coming to you.
So Chris, I, I didn't catch where this building was. You said nine hundred?
Nine hundred Boston Close Road.
Okay.
It's where.
Across from King Street.
Okay.
Near the pier.
They just re-signed it with that gray siding. It's got Nyman's Jewelers and there's a hearing aid.
Oh, that's the place. Okay.
And a seamstress. And now there's the Artesian builders with all the flags out in the road.
Okay.
By the, their cease and desist order and. That's the.
Okay.
So are we good, everyone?
Yes.
We're good.
Okay.
Thanks for.
Okay, great. Um, I'll make a motion to adjourn then. On our favor? All right. Yes. Time to go.